Welcome to our first session for the Lent Book Study. We are studying the book Practicing Our Faith by Dorothy Bass. Fate Takes Practice, and if we are to follow Jesus, we have to practice what He taught. So this week, we began with a study on chapter 12, which is titled Dying Well. We are excited to be joined tonight with by two guest experts. We've got Chad Penley, who is the manager and funeral director at Mays Ward Dobbins Funeral Home, just across the street from the church, and Chris Moore Kish, who is the chaplain at Presbyterian Village in Ossell, and several of our church members currently live there. So we have a relationship with both of these folks, and we're just really excited that you guys are here.
We really are excited. We, you know, Chris and Chad, I admire you both a lot already, and I am really grateful that together we serve this community. I'm honored that you're with us here tonight, and I want to thank you for being willing to share your wisdom and experience with us. Last Wednesday, just a week ago, we celebrated Ash Wednesday, and this is one of the more somber moments in the church year. Ash Wednesday is a time of reflection, repentance. And during the Ash Wednesday service, we remember the ashes on our foreheads, and we recall our mortality with the words, "Remember that you are dust, and to dust you shall return." This week, we continue that conversation as we turn to this chapter on dying well. Cassie, as you read this chapter, what were a couple of key points or themes that really stuck out to you?
Well, I really liked the way she began by reminding us, these are actually words in one of our Presbyterian confessions in the Brief Statement of Faith. She really reminds us that in life and death, we belong to God. And in other words, we aren't, our life is not all that there is. Death is also included in that, and so nothing can separate us from God's presence or God's love, and death is not the final word. So I love that she began with that, really with that claim, and that carried throughout the chapter. The second thing that stuck out to me is just that, death does not separate us from God. And so not only that, it also doesn't separate us from our faith community. So even into eternal life, we are present with our faith, the community of believers after death. So this made me think of when you drive around, even in Marietta, you'll see older churches will have a churchyard, like a graveyard attached to the church. And it's there because there is this belief that when we gather on Sunday, we gather with all, that all the saints are gathered. And so I love that that was really a focus of the communal part, of how we handle death as a communal thing. And that was the, I guess, the third thing I noticed is that dying well is a communal activity. She called it a shared practice, I think that was on page 165. And not only is the way that death is handled communal, it's the grieving process is also communal. So one way that we practice dying well is that we hold one another up in prayer. We voice what the person who's grieving or dying may not be able to voice. She gave this wonderful story around a grandmother on her deathbed, and how the people around her were praying on her behalf, or saying the words that she herself could not say, almost like the way that you're prayed for at your baptism. People around you are making those claims on your behalf because you're not able to. And I thought that was really, it was really, really touching.
Cassie, this is the part where I'm supposed to add to your summary, but I don't really have anything to add. That was a perfect summary. Thank you for that. And I agree so much. You know, sometimes we think of death as like solitary or something that you have to do by yourself, but that's not necessarily true. Like all the other lifecycle moments, even at death, ideally, we're surrounded by our family and our family of faith. This chapter offered a lot of appreciation for those traditions or rhythms that help us move from death to the funeral and then through the mourning process. Every community I've served in as a pastor has had slightly different traditions when it comes to the funeral and mourning and dying. The first funeral I officiated when I served the church in Columbia, Tennessee, the casket was pulled by a mule-drawn carriage out to the cemetery. Columbia, Tennessee is the mule capital of the world, and so the first funeral that I officiated there, that a mule-drawn hearse. But regardless of the regional rhythms or traditions, all our traditions surrounding death and mourning have been disrupted during this pandemic. We just haven't been able to do things the way that we once did. Chad, Chris, how has the mourning process changed over the last year? Funerals, Chad, maybe we could start with you. How have funerals changed?
So they've changed quite a bit, you know, obviously. And the chapter really talks about the community, right? You know, and it's a communal experience, is how people can gather and, you know, and kind of help uplift that person and, you know, carry that person through. That obviously has changed, right? It's hard to gather, to get people together through all this. It's hard to get into the church to even have, you know, that kind of experience. So this past year has been tough for a lot of people, just because they're just not surrounded by everybody, you know? So there's been some bad, but there's been some good, you know? And the good is that it's become more intimate. It's become the family center has become stronger, you know? Families have really leaned on each other. So we've seen some sweet moments come out of it, but there's been some hard moments too.
But it also, there is also the fact that people are having to put some of the real work of grief aside. So often, I have a grief support group. Well, we haven't been able to do that grief support group in person. Stephen ministers, we have a Stephen ministry out at the village. Stephen ministers are feeling like it's so difficult to just speak on the phone. They want to be able to sit across from, they want to be able to hold a hand. And all of that kind of diminishes the process of grief.
Chris, I love that, I love the way you're talking about this. This has really been a moment, a time when, where we're kind of reclaiming the priesthood of all believers.
Yes.
We have, our church members at home are setting their own communion table there. We even had, we invited the congregation to burn their own ashes and to mark their own foreheads with the ash on Ash Wednesday. To, and I suppose that's really the main focus of this book study, Practicing Our Faith. Cassie and I wanted to equip the congregation in saying, you know, we're not church members anymore, we're all disciples, and let's practice it. Let's get going with it, because the truth is, something I've experienced more than once is the one who brings the most comfort to the mourning family is not necessarily the clergy, but it might be the organist. It could be the custodian, it could be anybody. When it comes to bringing comfort to those who are in the pain after experiencing death, Christ equips us all.
Right. But I want to just say, one thing that I appreciate is the interaction that I have had with different members of the funeral homes who have come in at this moment that we're in, and their compassion, support, giving families a time, because so many of our families have not been able to come into the, at least at Presbyterian Village, they haven't been able to come into Presbyterian Village to have regular visits, or in the hospitals. And I have personally experienced how funeral homes have gone, and they have made sure that a person who has died has been respected. They have gone ahead, they bathed the person, they have prepared the body so that the family members have been able to come in and say goodbye. They weren't able to do that because of the closed hospitals and closed healthcare facility, or, you know, the continual care facilities. And so I've seen where, you know, I think we hear, especially with the Jewish population and the Muslim population, of preparing a body for burial. And Christian church, we've kind of gotten away from taking on that responsibility ourselves as family. But I have observed how the funeral homes have prepared and then allow families to come in and spend that time so that they can be tangibly with the person for whom they love, and just say goodbye. And I mean, and I really, I can't say how much I appreciate that role that the funeral homes have taken, and that never in a rush. I mean, they have made it perfectly clear, we are not, you spend as much time as you need. And that has happened time and time again. So for that, you know, Chad, I can't help but say, what an incredible role the funeral homes and the directors and staff are providing to at least help to support the families in the grieving process. Because part of it is being able to see the tangible and to have one last touch, one last kiss on the forehead. We need that as humans.
Absolutely. Thank you.
That's a, thanks, Chris. That's a good kind of segue into another thing we were wondering about. And been thinking about death, well, I actually had a dream last night that I was at one of the first funerals that I ever attended as an adult. I was in college, and my roommate died in a skiing accident. And I just remember that, you know, at that point, it's like, okay, mom and dad aren't going to take care of this. So the question was, okay, what do we do? Someone that we care about has died, and beyond just dealing with that grief myself, it was like, number one, we get flowers. Number two, we buy a card. Number three, we ask the fam, if there's anything they need. Number four, we go to the funeral and we're present there. Number five, we check in on our sister because she was still in school with us. So today, we can't do that checklist, or parts of it don't make sense. I mean, do you get flowers when there won't be anyone to see them? It's just, it's a strange time. So how have you seen people comforted during this time? Or what, someone we know has passed, what are some steps that people have, you know, maybe creative ways to ritualize that and show that support?
Yeah, so absolutely. And like I said, and for a lot of families, you know, when you kind of take away the pomp and circumstance of the funeral, you know, all the plant, all the stuff that you have to do, that's when you can really focus as a family, you know, on that person. And that's when the service gets very intimate, you know? Because maybe you're not going to stand up and say any words about your dad because all the people that are behind you in the church, you know, and you're uncomfortable with it. But I see more people sharing, you know, their feelings, sharing stories, you know? There's more, you know, laughing, you know, it's just more intimate. So that's the special part of it. But, you know, the way that we're adapting people, you know, they're sending, you know, they're still sending flowers, they're sending cards, you know? There's a lot of, you know, just messages, virtually, social media, you know, all that. Any way that they can, you know, find a way to contact that family, you know, to still show that support. On, like on our website, there's a tribute wall where everybody can go, and they leave messages and all that, and families eat that up. They just love that. They go back and they read those. It's an online register book. You can't come to the funeral home and sign the register book, but you can do it online, right? And so families take a lot of comfort in that. The, you know, the biggest thing is nobody wants to be forgotten, you know? Nobody wants to think that they're alone, and the book speaks about that. And it speaks about that very well, I think. So showing that support any way you can, you know, it's amazing, and it does a lot for the families, for sure.
Chad, I hadn't thought about that before, you know? For so many families who, the day of the funeral is kind of a blur. I've heard it described that way. You might hear from 300 people or, you know, 50 people in the visitation line, and you don't remember what everyone says. But if it's there on the online registry, you can read it again and again and again.
That's right.
Gosh, that's amazing. That's wonderful.
Well, and I can't help think, you know, with the Tattin Hill family, they actually, when Gil Ward passed away, he was a resident at the village, and somebody who actually my cousin up in Philly knew because he had been the executive Presbyterian there, and been and worked with him. And it shows how small a world we are. Maybe it says something about Presbyterians. But what I appreciated was that they arranged and orchestrated to have a group help to host the Zoom service that was conducted. And, but, so it was recorded, but it also gave family members an opportunity to speak and to offer their support, but it was live. And, you know, there were, it was this wonderful moment where I said, okay, I'm now going to step aside and let you all just catch up with one another. And the family just continued to be on Zoom, and there was this great kind of joy. But support, I've also seen where family members who might not want to play a piece from a favorite piano concerto, they wouldn't want to play that maybe in the church or in our chapel, but they've recorded that and sent in that video as their offering. Others have written poetry, which maybe, and especially as we've had a little bit longer to produce, because it really is a production when you're putting together something like a Zoom memorial service, they've had a little bit more time to work and to reflect and to create. And so I've seen where families have turned to poetry, music, where they've thought about, truly thought about some of the different themes that they want to celebrate, which, when you are trying to get a service in within a week, that just doesn't always happen.
Yes. Y'all, those are great thoughts about the funeral. Nancy Tattin Hill's writing us again, Chris. She, if you feel loved by Nancy Tattin Hill, it's justified. You deserve it. She just typed in, Chapel Moore Kish and Reverend Joe Bryce officiated in the Gil Ward Memorial Service. Their leadership and presence was invaluable. And I remember, if I remember correctly, Joe Bryce officiated that funeral, but you were sitting there with Joan in the Presbyterian Village, because Andy and Nancy couldn't.
Couldn't come in.
Really be there. I think about the physical presence so much. In that instance, I would have, it would have made me feel so much better to know that you were sitting with my mourning mother, mother-in-law. Because you just, a physical presence brings so much healing. I think about the hallways of our church as sacred space in the sense that on the way to the service, on the way to Sunday School, you might pass so-and-so and have the chance to grab their hand and say, "I heard you lost your nephew, and I want you to know I'm so sorry." Those moments are hard to come by, those moments of physical presence. What do y'all suggest we do as we, how do we care for the members of our church who have lost a loved one during this pandemic? When we don't see them on Sunday, we can't hold their hand. What, how do we reach out and offer comfort?
Well, one thing I shared when we were meeting earlier this week to talk about our time together, and that is that I think a few things that one could do is, so often, letters will come rather quickly, within the first week or two, and then they start to stream off and decline. And to be aware of that, and I try to make it a practice of writing letters months after, because I know that they've been, families have been bombarded, and it's to remind them that we haven't forgotten. I also shared that have a resident, her name is Sally Harden, and Sally, literally, she writes in her calendar the date that the person has died, and then she writes a card a year later. And a year later, she hands me a card and says, "Put the address of this person on it," and I send it off. But she's made a point of every person, a year after the death, she sends a card and reminds them, "I've been thinking about you. I've been praying for your family." That's another way of supporting that's not in the immediate, not in that moment, but spreading out.
Because the mourning process, it's not, you don't move through it in two weeks.
No.
If ever.
And I, you know, and some folks will say, "Oh, we need closure." And I have been one who finds that, I don't believe in closure. I believe that the pain may not be as strong. But I personally don't want complete, whatever closure is supposed to represent, because I do remember, I mean, my family will gather and will remember a grandparent that died back in 1974. And the way in which the stories come forth, it's as if that person is right there at the end of the dining room table with us. And maybe that, where, you know, as Cassie had mentioned, you know, that's about the, that's talking about the cloud of saints, the witnesses that we are surrounded by, both the living and the dead. And I think that's a healthy way for us to, you know, to share those stories. I'll often remind folks that there might be a great-grandchild sitting in the congregation, or sitting among us, or being on the Zoom. And it's our responsibilities to tell the story, to share our memories. And so it is ongoing, and not to shy away from, to say, "Oh, I don't want to start any tears, and I don't know what to do with those wells when they open." Well, that's being human.
Amen. And we got another comment in the chat here. Another nice idea is to send a card to family on the deceased person's birthday. I really like that idea, because there are milestones throughout the year where just, that are especially tender and where.
Aniversaries, yeah, anniversaries.
Anniversaries, yeah. Y'all, I have a personal question. I'm one who suffered a loss during this pandemic. Several months ago, my grandfather died, and my mom just couldn't get her head around how we would be able to have a funeral. And a lot of people, I think a lot of people are kind of like that, and I understand their hesitation. But now, without a funeral, I haven't been able to say goodbye to my grandfather the way I thought I would be able to. When I first became a pastor, my grandfather used to talk about how he wanted me to speak at his funeral, which made me sad thinking about it. But now that he has died, I have things that I've kind of been wanting, waiting to say that I would like to say. And for those of us who haven't been able to have a funeral at all, or the funeral that we thought we'd have, who haven't been able to say goodbye, what should we do and what can we do? Chad, you want to start?
Yeah. So it's not an easy question, right? So it's different for everybody. But, you know, again, the main principle of the funeral is to honor that person, right? You're honoring their memory, and you're doing that through stories, you're, you know, different things that, you know, that's what we do at every funeral. We share stories and, you know, and we're just honoring that memory. So something I encourage families to do is, you know, don't stop talking about that person, you know? And like in your case with your grandfather, you know, even calling your mother, right? When something reminds you of something, whether it's a, you see something on TV, right? That you knew, you know, would have been funny to him, or maybe you ate something that was like his favorite meal, you know, call somebody and tell them about that, you know? Keep their memory alive by sharing stories, you know, honoring that person. And it helps you, you know, because you're getting to tell that, and you're getting to, you know, kind of walk through that, you know? That grief is different for everybody. But, you know, that's the biggest thing that, you know, I tell people to do is, you know? And a lot of people, when they call people, that they don't want to talk about it. They think, you know, that we don't want to bring it up, you know? And that's the worst thing. So many people, it just tears them up when you dodge, you know, talking about their loved one, you know? They want to talk about their loved one, and especially if they didn't have that opportunity to have a service or something. So just that conversation, you know, back and forth, you know, it does a lot. It does a lot of good for you and the person you're with, for sure.
It's okay to talk about it.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah. I'm getting, we're getting, Jean Tafoya, a very wise and thoughtful person. She just, she wrote in a question that I kind of have too. For those who have, who've lost someone in 2020, and, you know, we said, "Put the funeral off or wait until next year." I'm even thinking about those funerals that we had, but they were sort of miniaturized versions of what we would have had. Do y'all have ideas, and this is the first time this has come up. I've heard, I've heard this question asked several times. As a church, what can we do? And I think about the All Saints service a little bit this way, like, what could we do once this is all over? What could we offer those families who postponed the funeral? Is there a way that we can reclaim some of what we postponed or lost or missed out on?
I think so, and I think it's a great thing to do. It's a double-edged sword, though. So many of the families that we have served have put off that service. The bad part of doing that is that, just like you were talking about with grief, right? Grief is this roller coaster. It's something, it never goes away. The pain of a loss never goes away. You just learn how to deal with it better every day, right? So months have gone by, we've had many, many families that call us and say, you know what? You know, we're good, you know, we've had this time, we got together as a family, we had a big meal, you know, no need for the service. A lot of families have told us that. But on the other end, that finalization is not there, you know what I mean? And they don't want to have that service because they're scared, they have to relive it. You know, they're finally getting into a better place, and now we're going to have a service, and it just throws them right back in, you know, into the deep of it. And a lot of families are just scared to face that. So it's different for every family. I think there's a lot of families that would enjoy and that are planning to have some sort of, you know, community involvement, you know? Some sort of service somewhere. We encourage every family to do something, right? It doesn't have to be big. We don't have to come to First Pres and, you know, get everybody involved and, you know, have a big service as much as we would like to. But, you know, like I said, having a family dinner, you know, and sharing stories. Creating a memorial service of some sort somewhere, right? Is a whole lot better than just putting it off and say, "We'll get to it." Because it hurts a lot of people when they do that.
Because it doesn't, go ahead, Chris.
No, no, I, well, I was just going to say that the uniqueness of being at Presbyterian Village is that when I was serving at First Presbyterian Church of Atlanta, we might have 26. we might have 26 deaths during the year. Or at the most, I remember, and I was there for 10 years as the Associate Pastor for Care Ministry. And, and at the most, we had about 37. Well, at Presbyterian Village, I, I run an average of about 64 deaths during the year.
Right.
And, and we really have put, my last in-person funeral service was in the middle, in the middle of February, a year ago. And I, I do think that, I know that the residents are wanting to celebrate and remember and would like to see actually one large service. We do an All Saints Day service at the first Sunday of November. And, and we remember and we light candles, but, but there's a desire to go a little bit deeper in how we will celebrate. And we've talked about accumulating different stories about each of the residents and have family members contribute. And it would be kind of a large, large service. But what we are, we're, I had, somebody said to me, not only did COVID-19 take an opportunity for me to be with my mother, COVID-19 stole the opportunity for me to hold her hand when she was dying. COVID-19 has stole the opportunity for me to have the type of homecoming that she so rightly deserved. And 19 is, is stealing my opportunity of grieving healthily. And it's like, yes. And then that's compounded by, it's, it's not just one person who, who feels that way, but the wider community. And that transcends First Presbyterian Church of Marietta, but goes into the Roman Catholic Church there in Marietta and the Methodist Church and the Baptist Church. I mean, we as a community, and I, I wonder, I think to myself in whether, whether we have a relative that died of COVID or not. When there was a remembering nationally, when, and, and this is, you know, not political. This is just, we as a nation needed an opportunity to grieve. And, and I could, similar to yourself, I had a cousin that died a year ago. We have had to delay his service. But I could think of Don, as I was hearing, even though Don didn't die of COVID, I, I was robbed the opportunity to have that service until we keep kicking that can down the, the road. And, and I can't help but think, you know, finally, there was a sense that, that we had other people recognizing this need. It's interesting, the, the National Cathedral in DC has put everybody's name up on the wall and has lit, lit candles. So when we passed 500,000 deaths, they actually lit a candle for all of the, and it, it just, and it's all along this, these, these ornate walls in the cathedral. And I thought, yes, that, that was an outward pouring. And we do need to find that outward pouring. And even though there wasn't a single person that they, as they pan, you don't see any human beings. They're just the names. And it candles and, and the names of those who, the 500,000 that have died. And, and yet I want, I, I want the flesh. I want the tangible. I want the person. I had this great professor who, his son was upstairs and said, Daddy, I'm afraid of the dark. And, and Carson said, you know, don't worry, you, you know, God is with you. And he, he said, yes, Daddy. And then he called down again. He's like, Daddy, can you come up? I, I, you know, I'm afraid of the dark. And he said, Carson called up again and said, it's okay, you know, God is with you. He said, yeah, I know God is with me, but I want somebody with skin on. And I think to myself, that's out of the mouth of babes.
Come on.
And it's like, you know, that's right, we need somebody with skin on. And as powerful as, as it is to see those names and to see the candles lit, I, I hunger for that time when, you know, when we're not having to say, okay, I'm wearing an N95 and I've got the face shield on, can I give you a hug?
Right, right.
And, and I've done that. And I've said, you know, and somebody has said to me after their husband died, they're like, I needed that. I've needed that, you know? And so you kind of break protocol because what? We're human. And that's what we hunger for. So sometimes it's, we maybe, part of this, we have to sometime break the rules, but also be careful and be smart about it.
Because we need somebody with some skin.
Because we need somebody with skin on.
I love that, Chris. Y'all, this has been absolutely wonderful. And we're, we're, we're getting more comments. Beth, I appreciate so much this idea. I'm gonna write a letter about my grandfather and send, give it to my mama. I will do that. Cassie, this has been wonderful for me. What, what ta, what takeaways are you getting from this conversation?
The big one, it was really that, that idea of, we, we need people with skin on. Just the idea that, that any, anyone may be the person that is the hands and feet of Christ in that moment to, to a person who's hurting or who's grieving. Sue Velardi had also written a comment that, that her sister got to talk to the nurse that was the last person their mom talked to before she passed. And just knowing that like, what a gift it is to, to know that this was the person that was with my loved one, that my loved one wasn't alone. So that, I'm taking that away, that, that we all have this opportunity and, you know, be empowered to, to take it. And I think the second thing is that it's never too late to tell the story of the person who's been lost. And it's never too late to call and say, hey, I was thinking about you. I just want to know how you're doing. I mean, it can be as simple as that. Making yourself available to, to, you know, I think most of us have probably known someone in the last two years or have lost someone ourselves in the last two years. And just knowing that you can always reach back out. And it's, it's not too late to do that. And keeping that story alive is important to the families. So that's it, that's a big encouragement. I feel like there's a lot of very tactical things we've talked about that, that folks can do. And maybe the third is know that we're in a national place of grief and there's a lot, everyone is walking around with that baggage. So let's not pretend it's not there, you know? It's okay to, to acknowledge that and, and just know that we're all working through that.
I love that.
Do you want me to, do you want to wrap up now, Joe?
You wrap it up, Cassie.
All right.
Ready? I can wrap it up.
Okay, go.
Okay, all right, all right. Everyone, I want to thank you for being with us tonight. Thanks especially to my friends Chad and Chris, who I now feel like I know even better and love and respect even more than before. And finally, may the God of hope be with you all. Go in Christ's peace. Good night.
Good night. Thank you.